Good evening. I'd like to call the October 14th Lansing City Council meeting to order. Clerk Swope, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pelavonaglu.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
There are eight members present at quorum, and we are to the meditation of Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, thank you. At this time, is there any council member here that would like someone to be remembered? Seeing none, rise for a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for approval the September 23rd council proceedings.
Vice President Hussein.
I would move the minutes as presented, thank you.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Alright, motion passed.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies. We have a tribute and recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, and I do believe we have Jason with us tonight, Timothy James, as well as Angelica, so if those folks want to join me in the well, we'd certainly appreciate it. You guys want to come on down?
Yeah, anybody here that would like to come down, please do so.
Alright, so this certainly is a pleasure to be able to essentially do this on behalf of, right? City Council, we have a beautifully written resolution, but it's incredibly long. And so what I'm going to do is read a part of it, because I certainly want to make sure that you all have time to speak if you'd like. And so very quickly with regard to Indigenous Peoples' Day. The, I'm sorry, the resolution states, whereas a resolution declaring the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Lansing encouraging other municipalities and institutions to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day and reaffirming the city of Lansing's commitment to promote the well-being and growth of the city's American Indian and Indigenous communities. And whereas the city of Lansing recognizes that American Indians, including the Anishinaabe and other historic and contemporary Indigenous communities, have lived on this land since time immemorial. And whereas the city of Lansing recognizes and values the important contributions made through the American Indian and Indigenous technology, thought, and culture. And whereas the city of Lansing recognizes that the city is built on land ceded in the 1819 Treaty of Saginaw, and, and then it continues. But the, therefore be it resolved, further be it resolved, I want to make sure I read those. Says now therefore be it resolved by the city council that the city of Lansing shall also recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October, and be it further resolved that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be used to reflect the ongoing struggles of American Indian and Indigenous communities, and to celebrate the thriving cultures and values that the Anishinaabe and other Indigenous communities contribute to Michigan and the Great Lakes region. And be it further resolved that the city of Lansing shall continue its efforts to promote the well-being and growth of Lansing's American Indian and Indigenous communities. And be it finally resolved that the city of Lansing encourages other businesses, organizations, and public entities to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. And with that, I would move the resolution.
We have a proper motion in place. Do we have any further comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Alright, motion passes. Congratulations.
And who's going to take the lead in terms of speaking?
Okay, so I want to hand this to you first. You know what, why don't you do yours? Yeah, absolutely, we appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. I am Kim Coleman, and I serve as Director of Human Relations and Community Services for the city of Lansing. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge Council President Garza and all of our dedicated council members. But I also want to warmly welcome our special guests and ask that each of you introduce yourself, your native organization, your employer, and your position. Why don't we start with you, Emily?
Good evening. My name's Emily Sirochey. I work at Michigan State University, the Office of Culture, Access, and Belonging. I'm the Associate Director there. And in my other hats, I am the President to Eagle, which is Educating Anishinaabe, Giving, Empowering, and Learning. And so that's a faculty staff organization, and I'm also Advisor to the American Indian Science and Engineering Society. So those are just a few things to keep me busy. And then, and my speech. So, Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm just super excited to be here today, and I'm glad to accept this resolution today. So I thank you for acknowledging this and for bringing this to the forefront. I remember sitting in this audience back in, I believe it was 2023, or no, I'm sorry, 2021. It was October of 2021, and this was passed, and there was a lot of folks here. So I want to acknowledge their work and their efforts in getting this here and all of your work that you've done. So this is part of the reason why I do this work at MSU and the Greater Lansing community, to continue to push and have policy, to have voices heard and acknowledged in this way, and this is one way to do that. So I encourage you, as you're thinking about things and celebrating this day, how can you participate in this? How can you learn more? And so, a lot of events around Indigenous Peoples', we welcome community in, which is you. So thinking about the Nokumis Center, which is in Nokumis, Michigan, there are craft days every Saturday. So that's one way you can come on in. The MSU Powwow in February, it's on the 22nd of 2025, you're welcome to come to that. The cultural events throughout the year, I was just all day today at Indigenous Peoples' Day at MSU, and we welcome community in at The Rock, and there's a celebration right now in Erickson Kiva. But we do that every year on this day, so you're welcome to that. I would encourage you to volunteer and to participate with organizations such as the Indigenous Youth Empowerment Program, which I'm co-director of. And also, if you're not, maybe you're more of an introvert, there's also things that you can do, which is pick up a book and learn about what the issues are, especially concerning the missing and murdering of Indigenous women and girls. If you haven't learned about or know about the American Indian, or the boarding schools, which just ended recently in the early 80s, I believe the last boarding school was closed. If you're, if you don't know about these kinds of things, you're not alone, because I didn't know either until I was an adult. A lot of these things are not taught in the K-12 systems for reasons that, that's another time we can have a discussion about. I empower you to make choices in joining with community on your own learning journey. Thank you for having me talk about this and acknowledge this important day, and I will hopefully see you all soon in community.
Want to introduce yourself? And we'll have each one introduce themselves. Mention your native.
Hi, my name is Angelica Baszic, and I've been with LPD for six years. I'm a Central Records Supervisor.
Bonjour, chao long, benesia indigenousa khas, nomi to dem, kuchingo doljiman. Name is Jason Morso. I'm a social worker here at Lansing PD. Been here for two years, from Kuching Indian Band.
Hello, my name is James Brunk. I'm a member of the Grand Travers Bay of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians. I am the Chief Radio Engineer for the Lansing Police Department and also Lansing Fire Department. Been employed with the city of Lansing for three years.
Good evening. My name's Timothy Martin. I'm employed with the City Lansing Police Department. I've been there for about 10 years now, and I'm a member of the Sioux-Saint-Mari Tribe of Chipewa Indians. I thank everyone for acknowledging this day. Thank you.
Thank you, and it is especially meaningful to have you join us while presenting your Indigenous city employees, our DEI Board, and community members whose contributions enrich our community in so many ways. Thank you all for being here with us. I stand before the rest of you for the same reason as Councilman Hussein. I have a proclamation here from Mayor Andy Shore to present on his behalf in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day in our city. This is not just a formality. It is a heartfelt commitment to honor and uplift the voices of Indigenous peoples. Indigenous Peoples' Day is a time for reflection, understanding, and celebration. It is an opportunity to honor Indigenous communities, rich cultures, histories, and contributions. This day serves as a vital reminder of the resilience and strength of Native peoples who have faced immense challenges throughout history, yet continues to thrive and inspire us all. Our city is fortunate to have a diverse Indigenous population, whose stories and experiences add depth to our community. Recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day affirms our commitment to fostering understanding, respect, and healing. It is a chance to listen to the voices that have often been marginalized and to create a space where all of our residents feel valued and acknowledged. While I'm unable to read it in its entirety, the proclamation before us begins with, "Whereas the city of Lansing acknowledges that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Anishinaabe peoples, inclusive of Ojeppway, Odawa, and Patta," oh, I'm getting ready to mess it up. "Pat." "Patawam, Patawam?"
"Patawamy."
"Patawamy." You all, I have practiced that over and over for the last two hours. Nations, and honors the enduring relationship between Indigenous communities and this land. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is a time to celebrate the rich cultures, traditions, and histories of Native American peoples, and to reflect on the lasting contributions they have made to our city, state, and nation. And then it ends with, "Now therefore I, on behalf of Andy Shore, Mayor of City of Lansing, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim October 14th, 2024, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Lansing. We encourage all residents to please join us in acknowledging and celebrating the histories and contributions of Indigenous people. Please."
Okay, that takes us to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Okay, are there any comments from councils? Seeing councilwoman Carter?
I just want to recognize there is Mike and Erica Lynn out. Last week, we had a tremendous two-day conference for the Lansing Empowerment Network with CEO and founder Willie Barney, who spoke a lot about the Omaha Network, Empowerment Network, speaking of gun violence prevention, intervention, and enforcement, along with reentry amongst other topics and strategies. So it was a profound conference. The work is still being had, and if you're interested, always tap into the lansingempowermentnetwork.org for weekly updates as we have a 360 call on Wednesdays from noon to 1:00, and a strategic session at 6:00 to 8:00 on Wednesdays. So again, I just wanted to recognize both Erica and Mike, as well as the whole entirety, entire LEAN team. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any additional comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just a few announcements. So first, I want to announce that Churchill Downs will be meeting tomorrow. So that's October 15th, 6:30 PM. That meeting, as always, will take place at 5825 Wise Road in the Sandy Allen Room. If you're not sure if you're a Churchill Downs resident, the boundaries are to the north, West Holmes; to the west, South Waverly; to the south is West Jolly, and then to the east is Wainwright. So again, that's tomorrow at 6:30 PM Churchill Downs Community Association. Also, on October 17th, which is this Thursday, the Luton Rich Neighbors Association will be meeting at Mayflower Church. This is at 7:00 PM. Mayflower Church is located at 2901 West Mount Hope, which is a church right at the corner of Luton and Mount Hope. And the boundaries for that particular neighborhood are Mount Hope to the north, Pleasant Grove; to the east, Deerfield to the west, and then Victor to the south. And so if you live in those boundaries or within those boundaries, you are certainly encouraged to attend. Also, on October 17th, a little bit earlier in the day, at 1:00 PM, we are having the South Martin Luther King Corridor Improvement Authority meeting, and that's at the UA Local 333 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Hall at 5405 South MLK. This is an authority that is working incredibly hard to drive conversation, and then a real change for what is one of the most critical now, north, sorry, southbound corridors in the city of Lansing. So I strongly encourage folks, if you're available, to attend that meeting. Again, that is October 17th at 1:00 PM at 5405 South MLK. Also want to thank folks that came out to our constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. Great conversation, rich conversation. We had the Charter Commission represented. We had the Mayor's Office represented. We had Parks represented. We had the Public Service Board represented. We had the Southwest Action Group and Juvenile South Lansing all represented. So again, just fantastic meeting. If you weren't able to attend but want to attend the next meeting, we are having our next Third Ward Constituent Contact Meeting, November 9th, at 5825 Wise Road. That is a Saturday, second Saturday of the month, as we always do. And that meeting will begin at 10 o'clock, so we hope to see you there. And then lastly, if folks aren't aware, 517 Coffee, this past Saturday, actually started to kind of roll out a small, but yet incredible, food menu. And so it's not just fantastic beverages that you can get at 517 Coffee now. You can also get a number of food items from, and a couple of them written down, from, let's see. They have smashed avocado toast with lime juice, everything seasoning topped with microgreens. They have Nutella toast with apple slices and apple pie spices. They have a grilled cheese with four different slices of cheese, and the list just goes on. And so if you have an opportunity to get over to 517 Coffee at 6030 South MLK, they are incredible, kind of love Lansing people, incredibly dedicated to the city, and so we certainly want to support. And then in terms of hours of operation, you can visit them at 517coffeecompany.com. Thanks so much.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any additional comments from council? Alright, the floor is yours, City Clerk.
Alright, thank you. Just, I talked about most things at the presentation that kind of overlapped, but one thing that I did not mention is that at early voting, we will have the special "I Voted" stickers. So if you want one of these, come to early vote. With that, we are to community event announcements. If you have a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
Hey, I know you guys all know me. I'm Tricia Washburn, the Engagement Specialist for Nation Outside in our Lansing chapter. I just wanted to let you know that we're going to have a listening session at the Neighborhood Empowerment Center. We want it to be roughly the week of November 18th or the week before that. During November 11th, we're thinking in the evening, 6:00 to 7:30 PM with dinner. But we wanted to know what your availability was, because we would love to have city council members attend. We're doing listening sessions throughout the whole city in different sections. So we're going to target the neighborhood of the Neighborhood Empowerment Center, which I think is Ward 4. So we would love for you to come and listen to what your constituents have to say. It will be a listening session where we ask the constituents what sorts of issues they're experiencing in their neighborhood, systemic issues that are like citywide or section-wide, neighborhood-wide. And then we're going to brainstorm solutions on how to fix them. So we would love it if any city council members came. You guys are all invited. And I will send you the mass email, but I just wanted to know what the good times are for you. So you can look forward to my email. Thanks.
Thank you. Other community events?
It's time for the annual Race to Restore 5K Run-Walk inside Mount Hope Cemetery. This year, it's on the 26th on Saturday. It begins at 10:00 AM. You can register at runsignup.com under Race to Restore. Also, if you're available that day to help out, we could use three or four or five people to help volunteer with things like setting up, packet pickup, registrations for late registrants, passing out drinks, and passing out prizes, waving people on, taking photographs, whatever you could contribute in terms of volunteer effort would be appreciated. If you can do that, please give me a call at 517-648-5730. And again, the online registration is at runsignup.com, Race to Restore 5K Run-Walk, our biggest fundraiser of the year, which supports our programs, our events, and our restoration projects, as well as the Cemetery Courtesy Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events?
Hello, everybody. Erica Lynn from the Village Lansing. I just want to invite everyone out to the Village Lansing Sixth Annual Trunk or Treat Event. It will be this year, as always, on Halloween at 6:00 PM at the Village Lansing, 3525 South MLK Boulevard. We are also still looking for trunk hosts, so if you're an individual, or an organization, or a group, company, and you want to have some trunks, please go ahead and email us at thevillagelancing@gmail.com. Or you can message me on Facebook or message The Village on Facebook. We will have Fox 47 on site. They're hosting a trunk, and we'll be going live from the event. That's special and new this year. And then for the, I believe, third year in a row could be two, we will have the city clerk's office on site doing a really fun voting event inside. So we're looking for a couple of volunteers to help that out. That's some civic engagement there. We will also have the Capital Area District Library, who's also hosting a trunk. So if you're interested, please give us, like I said, a message or email us. We're going to be having recruitment all the way up to the day before the event. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events?
Cheer up. Good Lord, you guys. So, thank you, Temera. Appreciate you. And we did have a robust conversation with multiple different sectors of the city for Lansing 360 and the Lansing Apo. Smile, please, you guys. I'm not here for that this time. It's going to be good. It's okay. Anyways, I want to invite everybody to come to Lansing 360's meeting. It's Wednesdays from 12:00 to 1:00 via Zoom. You can find information at thelansingempowermentnetwork.org or on Facebook at Lansing Empowerment Network. Our conversation is gun violence prevention. I've seen multiple council members in there. Ryan Temera, as well as Trinity Pelavonaglu, appreciate you, and Jeffrey Brown. So we'd love to see all of you all in there to be a part of this conversation and solution. Less talking about the problem and more talking about the solution. We've come up with a lot of that inside of there. Chief Backus has been instrumental in helping us move that along with the police department as well. So we're missing y'all, if you haven't been in there yet, and any of you all out here in the world. So, thank you. Smile, man. Come on now.
Thank you. Other community events? Alright, seeing none, I'll announce the close of registration for public comment on legislative matters coming up momentarily. So if you wish to speak during legislative matters, which is items 4 through 21 on the agenda, and it does include the three public hearings, we'll give you about another minute to sign in on the back. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
No comments from the mayor.
Alright, then we will, we are to public comment on legislative matters. And as I just indicated, that includes items 4 through 21 on the agenda, and items 4, 5, and 6 are public hearings. So item 4, I'll read in, is Amending Chapter 1236 Design Standards for Parcel Dimensions. Item 5 and 6 are both Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act items. One's a district, one's a certificate, both for 1102 South Washington Avenue.
Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just very quickly, item number 4, Amending Chapter 1236 Design Standards for Parcel Dimensions. We actually had Susan Statuick in just a couple of weeks back, who is our zoning administrator, talked a little bit about the reasons for this, primarily being that right now, as 1236 is written, there's several sections that are actually in conflict with Form-based code, as well as city statute. So most of the changes, actually all the changes, pretty much dealing with things like minimum lot widths, depth, depth-to-width ratio, those types of things. She talked about the fact that they get a lot of various requests pertaining to these issues, and that they're all approved. Because again, they have no legal standing to not approve, because they're in conflict with Form-based code as well as state statute. And then with regard to, so 5 and 6 actually go together. We're looking at potentially passing a district and a certificate. Of course, we're talking about an Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act consideration at 1102 South Washington Avenue. The applicant is Rio Ventures LLC. The building is a century-old building with, it used to be a gas and service station until about the 2000s, but it's really sat vacant on South Washington since that time. Folks might remember that at one point, we were considering a number of things for a new Pablo's Restaurant that fell through. We actually, in 2022, were presented with a new plan from this particular applicant. Things stalled out, as many things did post-pandemic, but we are kind of back talking about that project. So in any event, what they're looking at is about a $300,000 investment. They are looking at kind of a food-bar concept. They liken this to the Little Fleet in Traverse City. Might be a couple of food trucks, that type of thing, out in the back. But really, an awesome, I think, opportunity to kind of reactivate that space. This would be, if approved, first, we'd have to create the district, obviously, and then the cert. They're looking at a 12-year cert that would freeze property taxes at pre-construction levels. So again, that is 5 and 6. Thank you.
Okay, on to the input from the public. First, we do have a letter from Mitch Rice regarding items, in support of items 5 and 6, the Oprah, in support of items 19 and 20, and opposing item 21. First to speak is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Johnny Marr.
Okay, I'm going to combine my comments basically to combine the Oprah issue and the possibility of the public library being relocated. And I guess by now you all know how I feel about Oprah's. I think it's just incredible that we cannot, in this country, build buildings that have a longer than a 60-year lifespan. To say that our contractors, our electricians, our plumbers, our architects, our whomevers, cannot build a structure that lasts more than 60 years when they have countries in Europe that are living in and working in and governing in 600-year-old buildings is just ludicrous. It speaks to our mismanagement of these facilities. It speaks to malfeasance. It speaks to a disregard for the investment the public makes in these buildings and the fact that they are continually built to be obsolete in order to gather more tax money from the taxpayers. And we just cannot continue to sustain this. The public library needs to stay where it is. It's centrally located. It's convenient to all sorts of people, including those that come in on the buses. And the fact that, you know, they're getting inundated with issues related to the homeless population isn't going to change if they move a block or two away, or two or three blocks away, and are still downtown where they need to stay. That building is architecturally significant. It's an art deco architectural style that is very noted to being worthy of preserving. And when you get down to it, the bottom line is the citizens of this community cannot continue to invest in things that aren't properly maintained, aren't properly managed, and aren't properly taken care of so that they can last more than 60 years, including this vacant building on South Washington. It might be 100 years old, yes. The biggest issue you're going to have there is parking. No matter how you structure that area, no matter what you put in there, your biggest roadblock is going to be parking. So make sure that you get a good diagram from them of how they expect a realistic parking structure to be implemented for that property if they get the Oprah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Johnny Marr, followed by Linda Epling.
I assume you mean Jenny Marr?
Oh.
Maybe? So.
Sure.
Yeah. My name is Jenny Marr. I'm the Executive Director of the Capillary District Libraries. So I want to speak a little bit towards the proposed resolution for this evening. First, the resolution says a lot of nice things about the library, so thank you. I appreciate the kind words. I do think perhaps the council isn't fully aware of the increasing financial strain on cattle stemming from ongoing maintenance issues at the downtown location. We don't own the building. The school system does, but we're responsible for the maintenance, and we have done that maintenance each year. It's just getting more each year. As you know, the city doesn't provide funding for the downtown branch, although we do appreciate the support you give us for the South Lansing branch, which is actually- which is actually a much busier location. The building costs aren't a new problem. We've been trying to address the challenges for several years, and we've had these conversations with the city in the past. I'm newer to cattle, but this is something that I've had opportunities to discuss with the city, starting as early as last spring, when we were talking about joining the city's move to the, to the new city hall. Since you've all found yourself in this same situation of needing to move because of maintenance, I am sure you could be empathetic to our situation, that we have the same struggles in our building. Moving out of our current building does not mean we're looking to leave downtown altogether. We know the why of we need to come up with a new solution, but we're still working on the how. Our downtown branch actually houses three different things. It's the administrative offices, the local history archives, and the public library branch. And we can split those out to make it easier to find smaller, more sustainable locations. I believe the offices will be the first and most straightforward thing to move, but it's going to take longer than the other ones. We don't have a timeline on that. This is going to take several years. We're going to keep looking until we find the best fit. The best thing to preserve the building we're in is to do a larger renovation to update it. And it's neither feasible nor doesn't make any sense for cattle to make that investment. The Lansing School District owns the building, as I mentioned, but they can't make any plans until we notify them that we're ready to move. And that's not going to happen until we have a plan for exiting. Our lease goes through 2048, but we need to deal with these issues in the next few years. I think we're all looking to accomplish the same things here. I look forward to our continued conversations. The city has a lot of new plans and developments happening downtown, and we're excited to be part of that change, with an eye to continuing to provide excellent library services. I appreciate your resolution, and it's showing support for the library in spirit. And hopefully, we can continue to find a way to support, for you to support our process in practical ways, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Linda Epling.
Hello. My name is Linda Epling, and I'm a resident of the City of Lansing. First, I'd like to say the two sections that I am looking at right now are 19 and 20. I'd like to say that in terms of this, I understand that, yes, it may be the law, but I am simply opposed to this, especially 19. Signs provide information to people, especially without access to social media. And I will admit, I do not use social media. I do not like social media, and it can be very destructive in terms of its use. And, you know, a number of people do not use social media. I think it is hyped way too much in terms of that, and that some of the information is simply misleading in terms of its use. Now, as to the signs, for example, yard signs. A number of people put up yard signs in terms of selling various items. They have garage sales. Businesses also use signs. For example, it was mentioned before, 517, they do have a sign out there that says 517, and they use it. I know, it's good coffee, best coffee in the city. I go there about every day. There are also signs in terms of yard cleaning, businesses that have that. You had Comic-Con coming in here. They had a sign for Comic-Con in terms of announcing that they were downtown. That was the only way I found out about it. You see signs for missing persons up. Which one of you are going to go tell somebody that they cannot put a sign up for their missing child? In terms of, you also see signs up for trick-or-treat. You see signs up to clean up in terms of various areas, like for trees, trying to cut those things down. And I'm not overly fond of the trees in relationship to that. And you also see signs for animals, missing animals that are around. The signs perform a very efficient function. They're easy to put up. I know our organization, Linda, we put up signs all the time, telling people about our meetings. I see signs all the time in terms of other neighborhood organizations that have up their signs in relationship to that. It makes no sense to sit here and to say that you are going to oppose that, and you aren't going to use them. They have been very effective, and they are effective, inexpensive means of communication. The second issue I'd like to bring up is the Capital Area District Library. I'm aware of that. I'm opposed to the move from downtown. I'm tired of my tax dollars being treated like some type of vampires.
Thank you. That was our last speaker, so we are to the referral of the public hearings, numbers three, four, items four, five, and six.
Development and planning.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Hussein.
Thank you. So we have a balance of numbers, let's see, it's number eight through 17, since we already took care of seven. So we have a resolution of joint reappointment for Ayanna Neal and Jacqueline Gallant to the Ingham County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board for a term that expires September 17, 2027. We have a resolution of contract approval for MDOT trunk line maintenance, a resolution of authorization for MDOT Performance Resolution Municipalities Form 2207B. We have a resolution for traffic, traffic control order, numbers 24-03, 24-04, and 24-05, each of which regulate parking along West Washington Street. We have traffic control order number 24-07. This pertains to a stop sign on Astor Avenue at Palmer Street. We have traffic control order number 24-08, regulating parking along 1100 North Washington Avenue. And we also have a traffic control order number 23-07, regulating parking along Cascade Boulevard, Dory Lane, and Rensselaer Parkway. We have a resolution, actually, we have three resolutions that deal with grant acceptances. One for Automobile Theft Prevention Authority, ATPA Grant, Michigan Local Retirement Grant Program, and also one for Institute for Responsive Government Election Administration Grant. With that, I would move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion, council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action. Item 18, the Kent Larry District Library.
Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank Executive Director Marr, I think he's still back there. There you are. Thanks, for coming this evening and speaking to the importance of keeping a branch downtown. I think the resolution was designed to highlight the importance of having that integral part of our social service network in the downtown area. While I've heard it's not the most trafficked library by circulation, or gate counts might not be an accurate reflection of its utilization, I think when you, when you see the groundswell of support that we're seeing in the community through emails and communications and social media and other, other ways, it is a very important part of the downtown neighborhood. And I appreciate that the building is, is older. I appreciate that you're doing multiple things in that space, and that you're looking to divide them up and maybe move them throughout the region. But I do want to stress that the, the intent of this resolution is to highlight how important a downtown branch is, and how important it is to keep a branch downtown, to serve many residents for whom a vehicle is not their primary mode of transportation. It serves as a place of learning. It serves as a place for people to complete job applications and, and work on important things that require internet connectivity and things like that. So it's not just about books and, and circulation. It's about an integral part of our social services network in downtown. And I am glad to hear a desire to stay downtown from the executive director. And I would encourage the board, when they meet on October 30th, to have a conversation about this. I do plan to attend and speak with the board during public comment. But thank you for the continued dialogue, and with that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, and I certainly appreciate Executive Director Marr being here as well. And I want to recognize that we do have a unique situation here in the City of Lansing. And so if you go back to the 1990s, right, when this cattle millage was initially contemplated, and we kind of brought the Ingham County Public Library, City of Lansing Public Library, kind of together. The idea was that the millage would pay for everything inside of these library buildings. And so, you know, there's 13 right now, brick-and-mortar libraries. There is a mobile library, and then obviously, there's a strong online presence. The agreement with the municipalities is that the municipalities will actually provide for the physical space. And so we have a couple of unique situations here in the City of Lansing. Obviously, the first being South Cedar, where we actually have a private owner, and there's a lease in place between the City of Lansing and that private owner. And then we have this situation downtown. What I appreciate about this, the, the spirit of this resolution, is that, you know, I think it contemplates a downtown presence. Whether that building works or not, I think is a conversation that needs to be had between the, the school district, between cattle, and between the City of Lansing. I'm certainly hoping that there was a meeting that has taken place, or that will take place, between the executive director, the mayor, and the superintendent. I think that's good leadership and good business, and I think those meetings typically happen behind closed doors, and, and maybe even before something like this happens. I recall, a couple of years ago, there was a very real possibility of the, the breakdown, essentially, of the lease agreement over at South Cedar. We learned about that. Councilman Garza and myself met with, at the time, Executive Director Scott Dyrmstra, as well as the head librarian for the Lansing Libraries, that would be Melissa Cole, sat down with the mayor, the chief of staff at the time, very quietly, kind of worked to make sure that that didn't happen. Because that location, and certainly, we hope in perpetuity, that location will be there, that location on South Cedar is critical. I would say that the location downtown Lansing is just as, if not more, critical. So, so Councilman Spatafor, I certainly want to thank you for putting this together. And I am hoping everybody hears from this body that this is critical to have. When you talk about Ingham County, when you talk about Capitol Area District Library, and that, and kind of that regional, kind of, kind of the coverage. I mean, at the core of that, obviously, is downtown Lansing, and there's a critical need that I think cattle can continue to serve down there. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, we do have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances by being Chapter 606, Section 606.02, to prohibit the placement of signs in or on the public right-of-way and public buildings, places, and facilities, and to establish the responsibility of persons who place or cause to be placed any sign on public or private property, and to provide that a violation of this section is a civil infraction. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on City Operations.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. Just briefly, this is to prohibit signs being placed in the public right-of-way. That's not to prohibit signs on private property, but the public right-of-way. And what it does is it establishes, and this is 19 and 20, it establishes that it's a violation that's a civil infraction, not a criminal penalty, but a civil infraction. And it makes the presumption of the liable person, the owner, or the, what's being advertised on the sign. So if it's Candidate Joe Schmo's sign, then they're going to make Candidate Joe Schmo civilly liable because it's Candidate Joe Schmo's sign. Same if it was a handyman business. It will presume that it was the handyman's business that put the sign there, and make that business person civilly liable, which is only punishable by up to a fine, not punishable by any jail, because that would be criminal. And those go together, and that's what came through our committee.
Thank you. Okay, so we are setting a public hearing, so with that, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay.
Okay. Next, we have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances, being Chapter 203, Section 203.03, to establish the service requirements for municipal civil infraction violations arising from unauthorized placement of signs in violation of 606.02. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on City Operations.
All right, thank you. And Councilman Jackson, I know you kind of explained this, but did you want to move the resolution?
Yes, I moved the resolution to establish a civil infraction as the penalty for violating the previously amended chapter.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
I think the only thing, just to be clear, because this, this guy brought up at the constituent contact meeting on Saturday, it, it's always been a violation of city code to actually place these signs in the public right-of-way. But what this does is, it gives us more teeth in terms of actual enforcement.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1242.02 of the Code of Ordinances, Z1 2024 3724, Pleasant Grove Road. Rezoning from R3 Suburban Residential to MFR Multi-Family Residential is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning, and is on the order of immediate passage.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So the applicant in this case is WM Investments, LCC. And the, the, the individual that we actually had in, the proprietor is Brent Wheeler. We had him in. He kind of discussed the purpose for this request. Right now, there's a single-family home on this particular property. What he would like to do is to rezone this to multi-family, so that he can build 10 townhomes, essentially row homes. And that would be situated over two buildings. They would run kind of east-west, so they wouldn't necessarily, the front door wouldn't face Pleasant Grove. Sorry, each one of these row homes that's being contemplated would be three, three bedrooms. There would be about 25 onsite parking spots. And if folks are struggling in their minds with location, this is actually immediately, immediately south, sorry, of the Fire Department's Alarm and Maintenance Division on Farrell and Pleasant Grove. So in any event, with regard to surrounding zoning, we have to the north, R3 Suburban Residential, to the south, R3 Suburban Residential. To the east, we do have Multi-Family Residential. And then to the west, we have R3 Suburban Detached Residential. The master plan actually calls for the lowest density possible in terms of residential on this site. And so I was going to be a no vote anyways. I'm just going to go ahead and before I move, actually, let me do this. Let me actually move this, and then I'll speak to why I'm a no vote. Let me go ahead and move.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? I, I just got a question, real quick. Regarding this, this series of photos we have in our, in our packet, is this the current property owner's property?
It is. It is. So what I wanted to speak to very quickly, if you look at your materials, we have some pictures, this is actually 517, or I'm sorry, this is actually, what's the address? 3724 Pleasant Grove, as it currently sits. The individual that is asking for this rezon, lives in Tennessee. They spoke to the fact that they have a number of short-term rentals, as well as long-term rentals here in the City of Lansing. And they talked about how they, they manage these essentially through a third-party system via their cell phone. And from these pictures, that, that's clear. This is absolutely, and you can't see that on TV, but we have trash, we have tarps, we have gas canisters. We have apparatuses for babies and toddlers that have been pulled outside of, from inside of the home to the back deck. We have open accessibility on the first floor. The list goes on and on. I mean, this is, this is quite tragic. The other piece is, we did a little bit of an investigation on this particular applicant, and we actually had to send failure to register letters out for the following locations. They own a property at 2023 West Miller, another property at 1402 West Michigan, another property at 1220 Goodrich, another property at 1112 Climax, another at 3809 Lowcroft, another at 521 Allen. I'll let Councilman Koss speak to those in a moment. He actually took it upon himself yesterday to go out in the field to determine whether or not these were actually occupied. But again, all of these have now been sent failure to register letters. In addition, I mean, I'm struggling already when we look at, when we look at the pictures, when we look at the condition of 3724 Pleasant Grove Road. This is a single-family home that would be demolished to make way for these 10 townhomes. I was, I was no vote, no vote, sorry, before we even investigated this. It is, it is critical that when we look at rezones, we are looking at surrounding zoning, and we're also looking at the master plan. What is the point of having a master plan in place, and form-based code as an example, in place, if we don't actually respect that as we go through this process? So it was a little bit shocking to me that this made, it threw the planning commission into us. But even more shocking is the fact that this particular applicant wasn't vetted clearly before it got to the clearly before it got to this council. And so, if there was ever a no vote, in my opinion, with regard to rezone, this would be, and frankly, if we were to approve this based on the issues with surrounding zoning, based on the issues with master plan, based on the issues with this particular applicant, I don't think we'd have legal standing to ever say no again. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a proper motion in place. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. As Councilman, or Vice President Hussein had said, I went around yesterday to each one of these properties. There was 10 properties that the applicant owns, and in finding that, there were two that were certified, the rest are not certified. Every one, except for two, of the uncertified was occupied. Some of these properties were not short-term like Airbnbs, they were obviously long-term residents living in those houses. I think the other concern I have with this project is the, not just that he can't follow the rules here and get these in compliance with our own code compliance department, there's a question of ordinances with the distance he lives away, being the owner of these properties but not having any direct maintenance here. I believe our ordinance calls for 40 miles away, if I'm correct. Mr. City Attorney?
I can check that, but...
There is a distance, correct?
Well, let me check.
Okay. I believe there is a distance, but again, my concern is if he's not following the rules on this, what kind of a mess we're gonna have if we give this person 10 more units? I certainly think that he has an opportunity to continue doing business here in Lansing, but he's gonna have to show for me to turn into a yes vote for any projects in the future that he can get these properties into compliance and follow the rules like everyone else. All of us have to follow, and everybody out here has to follow, so I'm gonna be voting no on this.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. Just really quick, I'm just trying to distinguish between whether the rezoning is appropriate so that there can be higher density, so that there could be a possibility of more units and more housing, so more people can live there, versus, you know, the applicant, which sounds like it's not a great applicant. So, we try to find solutions to the housing crisis. The little things like making it so that there could be more units is just one step of that. So, I don't know if I'm approving or not approving it for this person as much as I may be approving or not approving it for the idea of more density in a place that's made it through all the steps thus far, besides the bad actions of the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, so that's, that's why I spoke to the issues with the master plan, so I spoke to the issues with surrounding zoning. I think there is certainly a conversation when you talk about adding density to a city, but we have zoning in place so that our city makes sense. So, I certainly don't think you do, you know, you do this in a kind of a spot zone type of way, particularly when we're talking about bad actors in terms of applicants. So, I had already arrived at the point, right, that I was an absolute no vote, certainly not trying to influence anybody else because of the issues, again, with the master plan and with the surrounding zoning. The fact that this is a bad actor, I think certainly solidifies my position. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any additional comments from council? Councilman Cost.
I just want to make one note because you had something about a housing crisis, and I think everyone up here is aware of a housing crisis, and I certainly have no issues voting for different housing projects as they come along, but, you know, as we have gotten these last two meetings, really bad actors in here, you know, that is the main reason that I vote no, is, you know, we look at what they've done in the past, I do, and it dictates what they're gonna do in the future because it's pretty much what they're doing currently as well. So, you know, we have good people in this city that do good projects. Unfortunately, this is not one of them, similar to something we voted last meeting on, not being good stewards of their property. And that is my concern, especially when you see these pictures, you know, that's, that's folks' neighborhoods, kids play in that backyard, adjacent properties, I'm sure there's kids cutting through there, and it looks like there's some rusty metal and all kinds of other stuff kids could get hurt on. And, you know, we've gotta put our foot down if we're gonna get better housing, you know, better housing for people. You know, the frustration is, because someone is low-income, we constantly have to look at this as settling for this type of property that's gonna turn into, you know, a bad landlord in bad shape. Just because someone doesn't have money doesn't mean they have to live in a low-quality housing. And, you know, I'm frankly frustrated that when we build these things, they're of low quality, and that's not what the people deserve here in Lansing, regardless if they make $100,000 or $20,000 or no money. So, I'm looking for good, quality housing when we look at these projects because I think we owe it to the folks that live in the city, all of our residents.
Thank you, Councilman Cost. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. Just really quick, aren't we supposed to assume that new housing passes all of the codes and standards that's required for even people to move in? I mean, I know that sometimes it doesn't, and then we have the red tag that everybody's a very big fan of, charging $100 a month. So, I mean, I'm still assuming that it's gonna be sufficient by our code for moving. And I don't know, I think that assuming it's not is just kind of like throwing our whole system that we follow so hard, the code system and the red tags and the pink tags and all of that, make safe and all that, all the stuff that comes with it, just up in the air.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying, oh, it's roll call, I'm sorry. Clerk Swope. Oh, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. You know, the conversation's been interesting, I think collectively, of course, us as a community do understand the housing crisis, but from what I understand, if you could clarify, Councilman Cost, you're saying this individual has occupants in unregistered rental properties?
That is accurate.
Okay. So, then that challenges our ability to enforce if we're not aware unless someone like yourself goes and spot checks yourself. So, I think, you know, the challenge behind what we have is the ability to enforce, and we already have challenges in our community as well with those who, you know, are not following the rules. So, if, in my mind, if we add, you know, two individuals who are doing things that are not according to the ordinances and the law of our city, then we're perpetuating the problem even though we still have a housing need. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Clerk Swope, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, on the adoption of the zoning ordinance, Councilmember Pallavani-Glu.
No.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
No.
Councilmember Carter.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
No.
Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
No.
Two yays, six nays, the ordinance is not adopted. And that takes us to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. We'll give you about another minute to sign in in the back on the yellow sign-in sheet. And in the meantime, we're to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move that items to be considered as read and full and that there appropriate referrals be made by you, President Garza.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Okay, from the clerk, we have minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Executive Order 2402 establishing a policy for flags at the David C. Hollister Lansing City Hall.
Committee of the whole.
Fireworks display license ace pyro for the city's Silver Bell celebration.
City operations.
The city council meeting scheduled for 2025.
Committee of the whole.
From the mayor, we have the reappointment of Sandra Zirkel to the Board of Water and Light.
Committee of the whole.
We have two appointments, Sharon Gillison and Tyler Moberg to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board.
Equity, diversity, inclusion.
With the reappointment of Paul Collins to the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board.
Committee of the whole.
We have Mark Klaus, appointment of Mark Klaus to the Board of Public Service.
City operations.
The appointment of Timothy Clant to the Planning Commission.
Development and planning.
The reappointment of Tiffany Dowling to the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority Board.
Development and planning.
Reappointment of Andrea Bightley and the appointment of Randy Watkins to the Board of Police Commissioners.
Public safety.
And the appointment of Farhan Sheikh Omar to the Board of Police Commissioners.
Public safety.
Traffic control order 24-58, parking along the 200 block of North Grand Avenue.
City operations.
Two items relative to orders to make safer demolish for 122 South Grand Avenue.
Public safety.
We have four grants from start to stop for the police department.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
We have Human Services, General Fund allocations, fourth quarter report.
Place on file.
Act 5, 2024, purchase of property 701 West Jolly for the city elections center.
Committee of the whole.
And sole source purchase, fire department request for Phoenix Safety Outfitters as the vendor for turnout gear.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
And slight correction on the agenda, the next two items are from Councilmember Spatafor, two items relative to amending chapter 404, provide for designated electric vehicle parking space regulations.
Public safety.
Communications and petitions, we have an affidavit of disclosure, Randy Watkins, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board.
Ethics board.
Claim appeal, David Ludkin for 565 and trash fees at 818 Call Street.
City operations.
And the withdrawal of application for SLU 1 of 2024.
Place on file.
We are to remarks by council members.
Any additional remarks from council? Seeing no additional remarks?
Remarks by the executive assistant.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. Speakers will have up to three minutes to address the city council. The first speaker is Linda Appling, followed by Mike Lynn.
My name is Linda Appling, and I live in the city of Lansing. First, I'd like to talk about the BWL and the bifurcated rate set for residents from 2:00 to 7:00 a.m. Allegedly, this is because they figure people are working and will use less electricity. I am uncertain of how they came to this conclusion. Obviously, they had some vampires out there that told them this. I don't know. Now, in the first place, a number of people use electricity during that hour. Therefore, their argument is specious. I would like to point out that I, who am retired, I use electricity during that hour. Why should I have to pay a higher rate? Also, other individuals, people who work from home, use electricity during that hour. Disabled individuals use electricity during that hour. Students come home from school and actually use electricity during that hour, perhaps for entertainment. I don't know. I have, people are also cooking during that hour. I don't know too many people that want to start cooking at 8 o'clock. Now, no reason exists for these individuals to be charged a higher rate for their electrical use. Rather, I truly believe the BWL has, you know, identified a set of vampires somewhere in the city to come up with those hours. That's all I can come up with. I have no idea how you come up with the hours of 2:00 to 8:00, and then after 8:00, you reduce the rate in terms of that. It just simply is a specious argument, and it sets up a situation where you are theoretically working all night. After 8:00 p.m., you do, what is it, you do your dishes, if you run your dishwasher, you do your laundry, you do anything else that involves electricity. Why should you have to pay a higher rate in relationship to that? We are forced to pay these higher rates, and it makes no sense. And the question becomes, when are we going to take control, i.e. you take control of the Board of Water and Light? I firmly believe that you need to put on the ballot a provision that gives you the authority to overturn the decisions of the Board of Water and Light. The system as it's currently constructed makes no sense. I do not see why I and other individuals should have to pay these higher rates. It is not right that we should have to do this. You continually take money from people in terms of that.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Lynn, followed by David Ellis.
Just wanted to talk a little bit about what Lansing 360 is, because we're not gonna smile up there, we already acknowledged that. But anyways, our Wednesday meetings, we really have come up with a lot of progression as we dealing with this gun violence prevention, intervention, and support. So, one of the things I think is really important is our hospital-based violence intervention conversation that's happened over the last couple of months or so, that as we get going, it's gonna actually need you all's support in your, I don't know, I guess your opinions engaged in that conversation. We're really working towards bringing solutions that are global, and I guess that's why my mood has changed about this podium, because I used to come here and beg you all for this type of conversation, for people to get involved in this, and now, that's not this, that's not the scenario anymore. We really do have some movement, and we really are making strides when it comes to this work. So, with that being said, the things that we've been able to come up with in conversations that we've been able to bring to the table, but also find resolution through, our mayor has been in every one of those meetings since I stood right here and invited him to the space. Just think about what, you know, the, I don't know, the motion that's happening when us two polarizing figures as it pertains to both sides of this issue are coming to the table, having a conversation. So, we can make time, and I'll just say, you know, with the mayor, there's been times, he was at the DNC and called from, you know, from the outside hallway to make sure that he was on this call, and I was told not to chastise that some of you all haven't been there, and I won't. I'm just gonna present the fact that if the mayor can be there for that hour every Wednesday, no matter where he's at, no matter our relationship, no matter anything that's transpired, I think that everybody in this room, there and here, can be as well. So, with that being said, we've had, again, leaps and bounds as far as how we've been able to address this gun violence by getting access to advanced peace to the hospital, which has been a real issue that nobody would have known about had they not have showed up in the meeting and had conversation around their access being denied. So, now, they have access to the hospital because of the conversation we had in there. Again, moving your guys' influence, the mayor's influence, to get Sparrow's, Sparrow CEO on the phone, like immediately, not me having to come here and beg for that conversation and go through leaps and bounds to get there, but him being in the space, hearing what the need was, and getting on the phone as soon as he got out of there to make the call, we were able to get them access like a day after I had the meeting with them separately. So, this is what's happening in there, like as things are happening, the acute problems are happening, we're able to get some actual resolution. So, from all of your guys' seats and positions, there's need, and there's necessity of you all to be in the space to hear what the problem is. Adam, you're one of the most, you know, most, best advocates that I know as far as showing up to these meetings and listening and hearing, and you know as well as I do, that's how we find out where we need to be. How does Batman always show up in the space? Because he's probably somewhere listening and paying attention and knows what the problem is. That's what 360 is. So, without any more time, you can bring me down there, and we could talk a little more about it at some future.
Thank you.
Date, thanks.
We've got David Ellis and then David Riddle.
David Ellis, downtown resident. I, I'm not, I'm not mad, I'm just, I'm just disappointed with how this project is turning out. A small, this is a very niche, small little thing I'm gonna be talking about here. This is the corner of Ottawa Street and MLK. There's a project from the city next Monday starting, and all they're, all they're doing is they're moving a small concrete barrier to allow cars to drive eastward from the west-side neighborhood to downtown, and they are narrowing an island to put in a left-turn lane so people can turn left onto the now eastbound Ottawa Street. This seems like a small, such a small thing for me to bring up, but if you, if you remember from the MLK project months ago at this point, me and people from the west-side neighborhood, we were at each other's throats about that project, and now, we're all buddy-buddy in opposition to these small changes because they don't benefit anyone except for people who live in Delta Township. anyone except for people who live in Delta Township and giving them ability to take like a couple seconds off of their commute to downtown. And the cost of it is, is much more through traffic in our neighborhoods and widening a pedestrian crossing by both adding that additional lane and adding a large curb cut to allow trucks because it is a truck route. But this is, this is the problem. This is such a small issue that should have just been routinely never an issue. Why is this an issue? Why is, why is Ottawa Street a truck route? Why don't we just relegate it to one of the two roads cutting through, Ottawa or Aligan? Why are either of these two roads truck routes? Why does there need to be a left-turn lane here at all? Why weren't the residents consulted about increasing the through-traffic on their neighborhood? I can understand that just people would assume, oh, they're, they're going to like this, this is an easier way for people living on the west side to get to downtown. They vocally stated that they don't want this. And it's just, we just, we just, in this city, we just assume that the, the automatic thing that always has to happen is we always need to just widen a road, we always need to just add another lane, we always need to make it more convenient for people who do not actually live in the city with no regards for safety. I'm not, I'm not an anti-car person, okay? I'm not, I'm not some rabid foaming at the mouth yelling at everyone driving. There's a center turn lane on Capitol Avenue. There was never a question of whether or not that was necessary when it was put in. There was never studies done to see, does this actually shave, like is this, if we removed this, would this add enough time to people's commute where it's like detrimental? That was never done. The assumption is always at the expense of pedestrian safety, and here is another example of it. So please, I don't know if anything can be done in the next week, but can we have this at least delayed until we look at other options for this road? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Riddle and then Loretta Stanaway.
Hi, I'm Dave Riddle. I live in the first ward. I'm here on behalf of myself and my son Ben. We have three points. Ben, Ben's sick, he's home today. Nobody will talk to us. We want to know who's accountable for what I'm about to tell you and whatever happened to due process of law in Lansing. About a couple of weeks ago, I received a four-and-a-half-year-old parking ticket from the city. This is during the time you were changing away from the meters and during COVID. I've made two in-person visits to the parking office. They have determined that I'm guilty. The parking office sits in judgment. They refused partial payment. I'm a retired person on a fixed income and I offered monthly payment pending an independent unbiased review, but there's nothing. No review. The interesting thing about this ticket is it came within 10 days after a Claims Review Committee submittal about the Public Service Department's abuse of Ben. They've accused him multiple times of violation of city ordinances. Last November, they came, they sent a crew that stole outdoor winter furniture out of his driveway and took away trash cans. In December, they sent, pursuant to a grass and weeds violation, December, in winter, they scalped to the mud much of the property. They cut down a rose bush, peonies, daffodils, English ivy, snow on the mountain and another brand of euphoria plant that was all green, like snow on the mountain. Amy Castillo of your Public Service Department doesn't know what euphorbia is. So who decides what gets cut down? During 2024, after the city busted up the homeless camps, Ben, as a kindness, let one of those people into his house and he was immediately overrun by junkies. There was trash, needles. Four times, the city came out and removed trash, four times. They turned his driveway into a neighborhood dump. Even when Ben was in jail in Mason on a minor misdemeanor charge, he broke the law in Lansing. We kicked, the friends and family kicked twice, kicked those people out. They got back in, they kicked him in the face while he was sleeping. In September, they stole an outdoor wood table, the city crew that they sent, a storm door, and they emptied the recycle bin, there was a car bumper, and they returned two days later and wanted to fight Ben. The city is stealing Ben's house slowly. These people are still trying to break in.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway.
Affordable housing.
Followed by Belinda Fitzpatrick.
On your list of potential things for future weeks, we have several appointments that are proposed. One of them is to reappoint Sandra Zirkle to the Board of Water and Light. And I don't know a whole lot about Sandra Zirkle and her positions that she holds there other than the fact that she's been there forever. This seems like it's turning into a lifetime appointment. I would guess off the top of my head, she's probably been in that position for 20 years or so. I think it's time for a fresh face, a fresh thought or a fresh mind in that position. Somebody who is not going to be a yes person to the directors of the board, who will ask appropriate questions and consider the public's input and, you know, be a little more interactive with the public. So I would speak against the reappointment of Sandra Zirkle. I support the appointment of Mark Klaus to the Public Service Board. I know Mark personally and he will be a good appointee for that position. He knows how to answer and ask appropriate questions and, and get to the bottom of issues. Farhan Sheikh Omar for the Board of Police Commissioners, I have a lot of questions about that potential appointment. It seems to me, if I recall correctly, back in the era of the defund police, he was in favor of defunding the police. We have reached a point now where the police are finally starting to climb out of some holes, making progress with the city's citizens, regaining some trust and effectiveness. And I think if we're going to put somebody on the police board, it needs to be somebody that can support those forward motions. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Belinda Fitzpatrick.
Belinda Fitzpatrick, 224 South Home Street. Start your thing, okay. This is an educational poster. It's upside down, but it's kind of good that way. I came across, I came across this at seminars I went to about naturalized landscaping. I used to go to a lot of these seminars at MSU. I went through the Master Gardener Program twice and my yard might look unkempt to some, but there's a purpose for my yard because if the bees die, we die. And this poster here, you can get it, you can find it online if you want to look it up. I paid $35 to blow it up, but it's available on the internet. And above the ground, it shows the portion of the plant that provides habitat and food for the pollinators, like the bees. And on the bottom half, it shows you the root zone of the deeply rooted plants and it compares it to this grass up here. Now, grass and pavement is the worst thing for our regional watershed and the lakes and streams and rivers. Now, I want to relate this to the Form-based Code and the development on the corner of Homes and Prospect Street, which makes me physically ill. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to get over it. You know, I told one of the workers today, I said, I don't want to act like an ass because nobody's going to listen to me. You know, I have to act mature and explain things to people. But this Form-based Code required the removal of a established gravel parking lot, and it allowed a, a church that, under the old code, it would have been redeveloped as a church as a single-family or double-family property. But under the new code, we had to have a paved parking lot with 12 parking spaces, which means now instead of water going into the soil where it will be purified, it is removed into our watershed. Thank you, I'll be continuing this, thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Okay, no further business on the agenda, we are adjourned.